Special night tonight, we have three new two council ladies. We want to welcome, we want to welcome you guys and Mr. Step, we want to, we want to welcome you guys and wish you well and looking forward to working with you, you guys, that's for sure, and ladies, yeah. So, okay, so, welcome everybody. Let's go ahead. Mr. Step is going to say the prayer tonight and then we're going to follow that with the pledge allegiance of the flag.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this glorious day and thank you for your compassion, your light, your wisdom, and your unending love. Father, bless this wonderful county we call home and bless all who live here. Father, bless this new county council with compassion, knowledge, and strength to do your work and may you constantly remind us that we are here to serve the citizens of Talbot County through you. You clearly remind us of this responsibility in the book of Isaiah, chapter nine, verses six and seven. For to us a child is born, to us a son is given, and the government shall be upon his shoulder, and his name shall be called Wonderful Counselor, Mighty God, Everlasting Father, Prince of Peace. Of the increase of his government and of peace there will be no end, on the throne of David and over his kingdom, to establish it and to uphold it with justice and with righteousness from this time forth and evermore. Father, as we enter into this Christmas and holiday season with full force, may I ask you for blessing to lift up our county employees and their families. May you bless them with safety, peace, joy, happiness, and for time well spent with family, friends, and loved ones. Father, if I may last ask for your blessing of true and real unity. Father, please use Talbot County as a model of what that can look like so that it may be replicated throughout Maryland, throughout the United States of America, and around the globe. We humbly ask all of this in your most precious and only name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every deep justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Step. That was great. Appreciate it. Okay, let's start tonight's agenda. The December thirteenth is before us. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Mr. President, I'd like to move two additional items under county manager's report. First, a letter of support for Shore Regional Health for their certificate of need, and second, a mid-year call for county personnel.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So, I've moved for that.
Okay. Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Next on the agenda is the minutes of November twenty-second, and the council has had that before us. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes, council? Okay. Hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. And I need to back up to the agenda. I need to move the agenda with accepting that as unanimous consent on, I didn't do that. Or did the vote, did the vote take care of that?
We amended.
Okay. Okay. I just want to make sure of that. Okay. Next on the list is the dispersment of November twenty-ninth, December sixth, and the thirteenth of December. Council has had a chance to review this. Are there any deletions, additions, or corrections to the dispersments? Okay. Hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, good. The, next on there is Judge Kehoe, want to come on up? He's got a presentation. How you doing, Judge?
I'm doing well.
That's good. Good.
I'm doing well. Thank you, President. Thank you, and council members, thank you for having me. You are the legislative branch and executive branch of our county government, and on behalf of the judicial branch, I congratulate you on your election victories and welcome you to Talbot County Government. And I just want to say that I look forward to working with you over the next four years. A little bit about the circuit court.
Excuse me, sorry. Judge Kehoe, if you could sit and speak into the microphone, we're not picking up the sound.
Yeah.
Councilmember Milkie is somewhat familiar, having been a lawyer, somewhat familiar with what the circuit court does, but I like to tell people that the circuit court is what you think of when you think of court. And a lot goes on in the courtroom, but a lot also goes on behind the scenes, and I invite all of you, either individually or collectively, I'd be happy to meet with you to show you what we do behind the scenes, to make sure that the administration of justice in this county goes as smoothly as possible. And if you have any questions for me now, I'm happy to answer, but I welcome you and congratulate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Keisha?
No questions. Thank you for coming in. Look forward to working with you.
Okay. Yep. Lynn?
No questions.
Okay. Mr. Step?
No questions, Judge. Thank you.
Okay. Pete?
Thank you for the invitation, and I look forward to taking you up on that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Judge. And we appreciate everything you do for Talbot County, too. That's for sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Okay. All right, moving on. Okay, now we're going to do an update. The Talbot County Department of Emergency Services, Talbot County Paramedics. Guys, come on up. How you guys doing tonight?
Good evening.
Good. Good. Good.
So, thank you for the opportunity. So, we wanted to come give an update.
Would you, would you mind telling the audience who you are?
Oh, sure.
Yes, that'd be great. No problem.
Brian Lecates, Director of Talbot County Emergency Services.
I'm Wayne Dyke, President of Talbot Paramedic Foundation, and I have with me tonight a board member and the chairperson of our AED program, Mr. Bill Wilson.
Uh-huh. Hey, Bill, you want to come on up? Come on up.
And also in the audience today, we have our EMS Division Chief, Matt Watkins, and paramedic Rachel Cox.
Okay.
And you'll hear why those guys are important in just a second. So, we wanted to come, come to you this evening to just discuss and update you guys on the AED program that we're doing. So, to give you a little history, and right around 2000, Talbot County Government teamed up with Talbot County Paramedic Foundation and created a public access AED program. What that does is puts defibrillators out in the community, so anything from like YMCA, Lowe's, bigger stores, gyms, churches, you name it. We've got over 220 AEDs in the community currently. And from the time, from the time of inception through probably last year, we've had multiple saves that are directly attributed to the public access AED program. Some of those were at the YMCA, Lowe's, there's some that come to mind, the Tidewater Inn. People were able, they went to a, out of hospital, sudden cardiac arrest, and we were able to have an AED on site that someone used effectively and, for lack of better words, restarted their heart into a viable cardiac rhythm prior to EMS getting there. So, it gives us a viable patient as an EMS provider versus us getting there and then initiating care. And care was started from the get-go. So, it allows us to have a viable patient and hopefully a good outcome for those folks that are suffering from the sudden cardiac arrest. So, that's kind of the history of it. AEDs are only good for a certain amount of time, and then they need to be replaced. So, we were notified by our manufacturer several years ago, a couple of years ago, that they were no longer going to be serviceable by the manufacturer. So, we teamed up with the Paramedic Foundation again, and said, "We've got to do something to get these." At the time, we had 123 of that specific type AED we needed to get out of the field because if something happened to them, they would no longer be serviceable and they would be, you know, trash. So, we teamed up with the Paramedic Foundation and we created a grant process with the generosity from the council and Paramedic Foundation and the business. So, all three give a third of the funding and they get a brand-new AED. So, that's a program that's been ongoing and we're still working towards replacing all of those AEDs. In the meantime, and I don't want to steal the thunder from Wayne because he is, he is the gentleman behind a lot of this, I want him to kind of take over and talk about some of our AEDs in parks, which is really a program that is getting up and running right now, and it's really fantastic. So, I'll turn it over to Wayne and you won't have to hear from me.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Yep.
The AED program, the public access AED program that we now have and that Brian was talking about would not even be possible without Talbot Department of Emergency Services maintaining and doing the training for all the people and places that we put them in. So, that's a very important part. He was being pretty humble there, but Department of Emergency Services, with the help of Talbot Paramedic Foundation and Talbot County Council, has made that program a very large success in our community. That public access AED program is a nationally recognized program. It was recognized by the International Fire Chiefs Association as a number-one program for small county anywhere in the United States a few years back. About five, six months ago, I guess, we realized that there was a bigger and better market out there for AED recognition in the field for public access. A company named Save Station out of Canada manufactures a cabinet that makes AED more reliable, more accessible, and basically more readily available to the public because they can recognize it in a standardized cabinet. We wanted to standardize the way people recognized AEDs in our community. This cabinet is for public access outside. That's how we're using it. We started out and we wanted to identify areas that we thought would get the most bang for a buck and who needed it the most. So, we identified Talbot County's parks and recreation areas, and that's where we have started our program. Excuse me. Our first program was at the Northeastern Park out at the, behind the Suburban Propane, the large park out there. As you all know, it's very well-used, it's highly attended on the weekends and during the weeknights. We thought we would take that project on as the first gold standard project for us. Our gold standard means that our goal is to establish a public access AED station anywhere in one of our Talbot County public parks within a three-minute timeline. So, anywhere you are in that park, if someone has a cardiac event, you can leave that patient's side, walk to an AED, and get back to that patient within three minutes. That's our gold standard. We have met that standard at Northeastern Park. We just finished the same project at Idlewild Park. We're very happy with that. And so, Idlewild Park is now covered within the same golden standard that we have everywhere else. These cabinets are quite expensive. They're over fifty, $500 each. We placed three, seven now. Our goal is to go to trap next at the Home Run Baker Park. We have identified three sites there. Hopefully, in the next month, that project will be completed, and then we'll move on from there. It's, the cost of the project is exponential, and that we were lucky enough to have another foundation join us, Team Trace Foundation out of Wy Mills, Maryland. They were doing a project somewhat like ours, and then we met and talked about projects that we were doing together and decided that we'd be better as a team to challenge this big project. So, Team Trace out of Wy Mills, Team Trace Foundation is our full partner in this, along with Talbot County Department of Emergency Services. The project is quite a project to install. They're hard to install. They have to have electricity, they're heated, they're air-conditioned, they have power supplies, they're lighted 24 hours a day. They have video access. If somebody opens the cabinet, they're videoed so that people, people in the public can know if there's any vandalism, they'll be nicely recognized. But Team Trace, ourselves, Talbot County Department of Emergency Services have partnered up to make this happen. It's a project that can't go without contractor help. We need people that have to help us. We can't drill the big holes that need to pour the foundations and things. Eastern Utilities has helped us in the town of East, and they've partnered with us and did all the legwork for us on that part. And there's an electric company in Wy Mills, Maryland called Gunther's Electric that has come on board, and they do all the electrical hookups for us for free. And they're going to continue with us throughout this entire project, and that is a big deal.
That is.
We can't thank Gunther's Electric enough. It's really stepping up to the plate. That's a big deal. So, that's where we are in our program. We have received national recognition already on this part of our program from Save Station in Canada. They put a nice article out on Facebook, I don't know whether you saw it or not, recognizing this program as one of the lead programs in the United States. So, we're putting Talbot County on the map, but we're also making it a very safe place for our kids to play and our parents to watch their kids play and grandparents. So, Talbot County is going to be one of the safest places with Save Station in the very near future.
That's great. Thank you. That sounds great. Bill, you want to say a word or two?
Now, these Save Stations, I tell you, for the last year and a half, two years since I've come to learn more about what they are and what they're all about, they're easily recognizable, they are very functional as well as being appealing, and it's really an eye catcher. So, you will definitely know, the public will know where they are, so if they are needed, they're right there for them, so.
That's awesome. So, so, just a, just a thought, maybe, Brian, in months to come, with this program growing, we might want to do a short little, you know, because the, the public has access and there's be a lot of people that don't know how to use it. So, we might want to think about, in months to come, maybe bringing the actual AED here so you can show people how to actually do it.
Sure. We'd be happy to.
Or something, you know, something to that effect.
We could do a quick demonstration.
Yeah.
And once we grow this out, we really want to publicize it even more.
Right.
We're right in the infancy of it right now.
Right.
And we want to, you know, maybe make some maps that show where all the AEDs are in the county.
Right.
Things of that nature.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And then really get the word out through social media and through, like, venues like this, so we'd be happy to.
Yeah, that'd be great. Safe? Go. You got anything to say?
No, I just think it's great. I saw the pictures and the locations where they're in the various parks in Talbot County, so thank you for doing that and all that you do to make Talbot County safe. Thank you.
Ditto. Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Step?
No, Brian, thanks to you and your entire team. I mean, it's, I've been out to Idlewild and North Park and seen them. I mean, absolutely wonderful. Thank you for the legacy training you did years ago on the AEDs when you did the first AED training, Stop the Bleed Cert. I mean, you know, all of the above that you're here for our county, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Lesher?
Well, I heard, I heard two good stories from this tonight. One is the lives saved and that will continue to be saved because of the availability of this equipment in places where, where people gather. But also, all the partnerships that you've put together to, to bring the cost of this down and the funding that you're bringing to the table, that's, that's really significant and, and that takes a lot of effort. So, thank you for all your, all your efforts to make this, to make this come about.
Well, thank you. And I, I can't sing the praises of Talbot County Paramedic Foundation enough. They, not only, this is one small project that they're, well, it's not a small project. This is one project they're doing, but they have funded Heart Monitor for us in the past. They've funded a hundred percent, funded our ultrasound project, and that was $9,000 per ambulance that they, they raised money and donated to us to, to be able to have cutting-edge technology. So, the Paramedic Foundation is where the, the real praise is deserved. So, thank you, though.
Thank you.
Well, we really thank you guys for everything you do, and you guys in the back here, thanks for coming tonight. Really, really appreciate it. You guys mean a lot to us and a lot to the community because I tell you, you're a phone call away and you're, you're right there. So, I'm proud to be a part of it. Mr. Stamp, you want to say something? That was your field at one time.
We are very fortunate in Talbot County to have an amazing emergency services system. Certainly, respect the dedication of Mr. Diet, who leads the Paramedic Foundation. I'm honored to be on the Paramedic Foundation, and I think we're all doing the right thing for our community, and it's a good place to, to live, so, thank you.
And I'll, and I'll leave it, one thing, to kind of embarrass him a little bit. So, so, congratulations on being the most beautiful person in Maryland.
Well, thank you.
Okay? Yeah.
And I would be remiss without saying, Rachel, if you want to stand up.
Yeah. Please do.
Rachel is one of our paramedics. She's riding the paramedic unit on a routine shift, but on her off-shift, she's, she's 100% doing the AED CPR program.
Wow. Great.
And doing a lot of good work in there.
That's great.
That's why she's here with us tonight.
Well, appreciate it.
I want to make sure that she is recognized for that. And then obviously, Matt Watkins, our EMS chief, that you'll, you'll see more of in the upcoming months, I'm sure, so.
Okay, that's great. Well, we really appreciate everything you guys do, that's for sure. Thanks.
Thank you, probably.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good job. Good job.
Okay. All right, let's, let's go ahead and get moved on. Next thing on the agenda is that, Mr. Stamp, you want to take over for a few minutes?
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay.
First item that we have under the county manager's reports is for board and committee appointments. That would be the annual assignment of the liaison roles for the county council. So, I will read off the, the boards.
Would you, would you, would you mind, would you mind explaining to the public that each member up here takes care of some boards here? That'd be great.
Exactly. So, there are 23, I believe, 23 boards that the county council provides a liaison to that board on a regular basis, and then periodically those roles change. So, the first order of business of the new council is to decide which boards that they would like to be the liaison to. You have had the opportunity to look at this, and I'm going to go through these in its entirety and then ask for council support through a motion and a vote to assign the liaisons.
Okay.
Thank you. So, the first is the airport board. The airport board is, we recommend to be represented by Chuck Callahan. The next is a Board of Education Liaison. We're recommending Chuck Callahan. The Commission on Aging recommending Lynn Milkie. Economic Development Commission, we're recommending Chuck Callahan. Emergency Services Advisory Board recommending Dave Step. Golf Board recommending Lynn Milkie. Library Board recommending Pete Lesher. Local Emergency Planning Commission, representing, we're recommending Dave Step. The Maryland Association of Counties would be Keisha Hayth and Lynn Milkie. Midshore Regional Council, two members, would be Chuck Callahan and Lynn Milkie. Neighborhood Service Center would be, the Neighborhood Service Center Board of Directors would be Keisha Hayth. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board would be Dave Step. Public Works Advisory Board would be Pete Lesher. Social Services Board of Directors would be Pete Lesher. Talbot Arts Council would be Pete Lesher. Talbot County Chamber of Commerce Government and Regulatory Meeting would be Keisha Hayth. Talbot Family Network Board of Directors would be Chuck Callahan. The Tourism Board would be Keisha Hayth. Upper Shore Aging Incorporated Board of Directors would be Pete Lesher. And the Weed Control Committee would be Dave Step. These are the recommended liaisons to those boards if the council would care to take action to approve.
Okay. Good job.
I'll, I'll move for the appointments as presented by the county manager.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Yes, Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Very good. So, I would ask Ray Clark, come forward, your county engineer. The first item that Ray is going to present to you is a request from the Department of Public Works to purchase septic tank affluent pump step systems for the Region Two St. Michael's wastewater system and E1 grinder pumps for the Region One St. Unionville, Tunis Mills, Copperville wastewater systems. As you read in your agenda packet, the Department of Public Works requesting council approval to purchase eight replacement E1 grinder pumps from the Freemeyer and Associates in a sum of $25,639.20. The cost will be charged to the Unionville, Tunis Mill, Copperville operating budget. Also requesting the purchase of 10 Oranco step units in a sum of $68,679.44. The cost will be charged to St. Michael's asset budget. Ray is here to provide further details and answer any questions you might have.
Again, council, for the step systems, these are actually septic tank affluent pump systems, so these are actually new systems that we'll be purchasing, and ultimately, these go in as, into a house that's going to be built, or let's say, a septic system's going to be replaced. What we'll be doing is, and we'll be working with the finance office as well on this, as a property owner's coming in to be connected to sewer, they'll be, they'll have to buy that step unit from the county. So, we will be reimbursed. So, we are working with the finance office on creating an inventory, an inventory and also a reimbursement program for that. So, then we'll be working with them to kind of give an accounting of what our inventory is, let's say, at the end of the fiscal year. So, that's something we'll be working with them on. Again, buying 10, we're eligible for a discount, so we get about $644 per system discount, so that's for 10, it's about $6,000 in a discount by buying 10 at, 10 at a time. So, any questions on the steps or?
So, Mr. Clark, I presume that you'll go through these first 10, you'll then have the, get the reimbursement funding from those property owners, and you'll be able to get a similar discount in the future buying the, the next group of these?
Yes, and, and so the council is aware, I mean, we are looking at, we do have new houses being built in Bellevue. I think there's 14 new houses that are being planned that we also have, you know, at this point in time, we're trying to get sewer down Ferry Bridge Road, which we have three houses down that, you know, going down Ferry Bridge Road. So, these would be, actually be used for those houses at this point in time. And just for your, also information, as a house is being upgraded with this step unit, if it's an existing house, they would be eligible through the Bay Restoration Fund for assistance. If they make less than $300,000, they get $25,000. If they make more than $300,000, they get $12,500. So, that's, that would be part of the, you know, program as well.
And that funding would pay for more than just this pump, it's for the whole upgrade to the connection fees and capital charges.
It pays for all that, our capital charges as well, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
And then the other one, I guess, is the grinder pumps. Again, we're looking at buying eight because we would receive a 10% discount on those. This is actually to replace or provide us an inventory for replacement pumps. Unfortunately, E1, they no longer support their 200 or 2,000 series grinder pumps, so this, we're in a position, we're trying to pull what we can as far as spare parts out of some of the pumps that we have and utilize those, but we do need to have some replacement pumps. This will actually probably won't be reimbursable unless we utilize it from a different sanitary district. So, like in the case, the Preserve at Wy Mills, if they do have grinder pumps, if we had to put one out there, we'd have to charge the Preserve at Wy Mills for that pump. And at the same time, it was taken out of, let's say, Tillman Island or the Region Five, we'd have to charge Region Five for that pump.
Any other council member?
Okay.
I'll, I'll move approval, as requested.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to move forward with Mr. Clark's recommendations.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
The next item Ray's going to speak to you about, he's requesting the award of a contract for expansion of spray irrigation field for the Preserve at Wy Mills wastewater treatment plant. As you read in your agenda packet, the Department of Public Works is requesting council approval to award spray irrigation work to Sussex Irrigation in the sum of $27,762.68. The cost will be charged to Preserve at Wy Mills contractual services line item. Ray will give you further detail on it.
Again, for the general public as well, right now, we currently are spray irrigating on about two acres. This would expand it to 12 acres. We are limited to about two inches per acre per week to spray irrigate on. So this would actually allow us to rotate through the fields, potentially two acres here and two acres there on a weekly basis. At the same time, we are working to transfer the wastewater treatment plant from the Preserve at Wy Mills Property Owners Association to Talbot County. As part of that, we will be, as part of that transfer agreement, the property owners will have to pay $1,200. In addition to the $1,200, they will also be paying $150 per month for the operation and maintenance services that will be provided. So again, once the, I guess, the transfer agreement has been set, then we will then charge each property owner $1,200. They'll pay, I think, the first $600 within 90 days and in 180 days will pay the remaining $600 for $1,200. That would generate about $80,400 out of the 67 lots. So that's where this expenditure would come from.
That's great, that's great. Council?
No questions.
No questions.
Good.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion second to take recommendations of preserves. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth? Aye.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Appreciate it. Good job.
Counsel, we have a request for a letter of support for the University of Maryland Shore Regional Health Certificate of Need, application to the Maryland Healthcare Commission for the regional medical center projects, requesting council's approval to draft a letter and send a letter in support of that.
Yep, that would be, okay.
I'll move to authorize the letter of support.
I'll second.
Okay. We've got a motion second to send a letter of recommendation. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
And finally, counsel, as you all know, across the country, we're seeing inflationary pressures affect many people. They are also affecting our employees. Over the past year, we've lost 16 employees, which is a significant number, to other jurisdictions. So in addition to the inflationary pressures, there's a highly competitive environment that we're faced when it comes to especially our paramedics and police officers and correctional officers and some of our other key positions. I'm asking council's consideration to approve a 2% mid-year COLA in the amount of $264,545, which those funds are in the FY '23 budget and available for use for this purpose. I will mention in requesting this that two of our neighbors, Queen Anne's County has approved a 2% mid-year COLA and Caroline a 3% mid-year COLA. I will also make note that the state of Maryland, the governor's approved a 4.5% cost of living mid-year COLA for state employees. And so this would be in line with just trying to stay competitive for important positions that we have. And so I would ask council's consideration for this request.
Thank you, Mr. Stamp. Counsel?
Mr. Stamp, could you quantify for us the, what's at risk? How, what we're losing because of price competition for county employees to other jurisdictions or to private industry?
Yeah, so it's not, you know, so I mentioned that we've lost 16 this past year and those include dispatchers, deputy correctional officers. So you have the cost of the employee, but then you have the cost associated with training new employees. So it's not just the salary cost that you lose, it's the cost that you have to train up individuals, which is not an insignificant amount of money. And, you know, the bottom line is, is that we are in a highly competitive market right now for talent. And I don't mean to be so basic, but, you know, you get what you pay for. And so, you know, this is where we find ourselves right now.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, not at this time.
Okay.
I've seen plenty of evidence of people moving because of these salary opportunities and not just from county government. I mean, this is a wider phenomenon that we're simply one small part of. And we know how important it is to provide continuity of service, the services that these employees provide to our public and to the safety of our citizens, whether through correctional officers or emergency workers. We can't afford to, we can't afford to have too many vacancies in these departments. And so I think it's important that we move forward with the mid-year COLA, knowing that this is, this is an extraordinary move. This is not a normal thing to do amid your, amid your cost of living adjustment. But we're in extraordinary times. We have to, we have to hope that the Federal Reserve gets inflation under control and that we don't have to do this again, that we can just do this through part of the normal budget process and not have to worry about trying to take extraordinary measures to retain our employees at a mid-year point. One final question, Mr. Stamp. This would be covered through the contingency?
Yes, so we do have, the previous council did approve funds to address salary issues. So we do have money in the budget to cover this issue.
Well, with that, I will, I will move the approval of the 2% mid-year COLA as requested by staff.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a motion second to put in effect a 2% COLA. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
I am in support of the motion, but will abstain on this vote as it directly affects my family.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth? Aye.
Counsel, thank you. And, you know, on behalf of our employees, we have incredibly dedicated employees that work for Talbot County. And not just dedicated, but amazingly good at the job they do. And so this sends a signal to them for your confidence in their work. So thank you on behalf of them. And that concludes the county manager report for this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Madam Secretary, I want to check to see if public comment, if anybody... Nobody's in, okay. Anybody out here I'd like to come up? Come on up there. It's public comment. It's public comment. Come on up there. Yeah.
Hello, council. My name's Darrell Caldwell. I'm lieutenant with the Eastern Volunteer Fire Department. I'm not, I'm familiar with Mr. Lesher, Mr. Callahan, Mr. Stamp. I'd like to congratulate the ones who won. Want a new council. I want to welcome you. I also want to, you'll see my face again because our fire department's doing, trying to build a training center and a regional training center. We've reached out to our partners in law enforcement and EMS. And other than your emotional support, you never know, I might ask for financial support. But I want you to know that right here, we welcome you, the Eastern Volunteer Fire Department, the officers of the Eastern Volunteer Fire Department welcome you. And anything we can do, come around the firehouse, have a cup of coffee, have a soda. And Mr. Callahan and Mr. Stamp can tell you, you go to a firehouse, we'll solve all the problems in the world. You'll get all kinds of information. So congratulations again.
Thank you.
And if anything we can do to help, let us know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darrell. Appreciate it. Appreciate all you do too.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? You don't want to come up, Martha? Come on now. Okay, 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 okay. I guess we'll go ahead and wrap it up with council comments. So who wants to be first?
Go in the same order, Chuck Lee's off.
I do last, sorry.
Okay. I'll go ahead and go.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
All right. Just wanted to thank the, just thank the county for, you know, putting their faith in myself and the rest of the council here. We hope to make you proud. I'd like to also wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, and looking forward to serving you. Thank you.
Mr. Lesher? I'll likewise welcome my colleagues on this council again and look forward to a productive four years with you. And on another note, I've been approached by constituents to introduce a resolution to recognize the planning commission's decision last year on the consistency of legislation awarding sewer connection eligibility to the, for the Lakeside Development in TRAP. I'm working on specific language for that resolution and when completed, we'll release it to allow for transparency and public feedback. And I look forward to introducing that, I hope, at our next council meeting on January 10th.
Okay. Spoke.
Thank you. I wanted to express my gratitude for, to the citizens who elected me to this historic council, which I'm so grateful to be serving on, and to all the employees of the county. I've been meeting, I've known some over the years and I've been meeting them in our orientation session. And we have the best employees, I think, I've encountered. We're so blessed to have them in Talbot County and I want to thank them and that the vote for the COLA is really well deserved to all of them. And wish everybody a happy holiday. Thank you.
Mrs. Hayth?
Yes, well, I sit here with excitement and look forward to serving the people of Talbot County and working with each and every council member seated here this evening. I echo what Lynn said. A special thank you to the county employees. The 2% is a well-deserved COLA. Being a county employee myself, I know how the work is hard and, you know, you really need to be valued and appreciated. So we really do value the county employees. You do an awesome job at keeping the county running smoothly. And I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and say God bless you to all of you and your families during this season.
That's great. And I'll wrap it up by saying the same thing. It's a pleasure. Congratulations being here, looking forward to you guys. And like you say, it is historic here. And we really appreciate you guys and appreciate the public. And I know you were really looking forward to tonight and you've guys done a phenomenal job, that's for sure. So other than that, I want everybody to have a great holiday and, you know, like everybody said, that we really value these employees, okay? There's Mr. Stamp, there's what, 370 some?
There's 305 full-time employees and 107 part-time.
Okay, so that is what, four?
400.
400. So we value that a lot. And I will echo that, you know, we deal with the fire departments and EMS and recruitment and retention. So we have to look at it the same way with our employees. We have to take care of them. So it's vital we do that, you know, and sometimes we have to sort of keep up with either surrounding counties and stuff and we just can't, we just can't afford to lose some of these people that we really count on. So other than that, Mr. Lesher, you want to go ahead and say the last words here?
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 10th, beginning at 6 o'clock PM. The council will be convening in open session at 4:30 PM and then adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate legal and personnel matters as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. The county council will be meeting on Tuesday, December 20th at 3 o'clock PM with local delegation to discuss the upcoming legislative session and at 4 o'clock PM with Dr. Clifford Coppersmith, president of Chesapeake College Foreign Orientation.